Is everyone here to your knowledge, Amy? I think Amy's frozen. Okay, Amy's having some internet issues and she asked for us to wait till she can figure that out to start. So we'll just give her a minute or two here. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order at 10:06. And at this time, we'll take public comment. All written public comments that are received prior to 4:00 PM the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and will be added as supplemental material for the library trustees. The public must call 775-783-6024. For the library board of trustees and the public. Any written public comment received after 4:00 PM the day before deals to the county's website and distributed to the library board of trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. Veronica, is there any public comment?
I have not received any public comment voicemail at
that open for five minutes.
I just wanted to welcome Heather to the board.
Well, thank you.
I listened to your interview. It was very good.
Well, thank you. I'm happy to
Were there any public comments, Veronica?
There were no public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to the agenda. And I was waiting until public comment was over to let everyone say hello to Heather. Introduce yourself to let her know who's involved in the meetings. So I'm Kate Gerhann on
I'm Bonnie Rogers and I'm the vice chair.
Hello, Bonnie.
I'm Jill Harper. My first year, so I'm a newbie too.
Okay, great, Jill. Good to meet you. Hey, nice to meet you, Mark.
I've already met Heather, so
I was waiting for that to happen. I'm clerk to the board.
Yes, nice to see you again, Veronica.
Laura Trynand, I'm a library supervisor at the Minnan branch.
Carrie, our new deputy DA.
Thanks. Nice to meet you, Heather.
Nice to meet you, too.
Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item number two for possible action. Discussion the right to take items out of order or to combine two or more agenda items for consideration and to remove items from the agenda at any time. Action shall include discussion by the board deny, take no action, or continue the item.
I have a recommendation to number five. It says discussion of possible direction for the staff to make revisions and/or addition to library policy. For the board review and possible action.
So this is Carrie with the DA's office. I guess my recommendation on that would be it to frame the motion at that time to any agenda at this point.
I thought about it, Carrie, but I have a question because it's on the agenda. This or if the motion could be made at that time to change that. On the agenda when that was not our intent.
I'm not sure that the the item comes up if your motion, the staff direction you might give, for example, is go sense.
It does. Okay, so we're no problem if the action item is different than what we might take in the afterwards.
Oh, I think that would be direction to make certain revisions to the policies. And so I'm going to bring them back to you for review. I think that would be consistent with what's on there.
Okay. That's all I have on that. So I make approval. I make a motion to approve.
Mark Jensen.
Okay, we have a motion and a
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion for possible action, discussion on approval of the minutes of the September 30th, 2020 regular meeting.
Do we approve the minutes as presented? This is Mark Jensen.
I second it, Jill Harper.
It's as presented. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Agenda review of the budget performance report summary and the gift fund summary. Amy?
This is Amy. This month, we're looking at September's budget. We're at the end of our that puts us at 25%. We're under budget on every category. Salaries, benefits, and services. We'll continue to do so. There haven't been related purchases. And that's about it. It's but I'm happy to answer any questions. At the last board meeting, the current balance right now of the fund is about $32,000. However, it hasn't been carried over into the new fiscal year, which I stated last month. And that's because so once the the audit is complete, then we'll be able to transfer into the current fiscal year.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments on that? Okay, then we'll move possible action, discussion and possible and do we want to go through the policies that are in place right now and just ask if anyone has any input on that? So that we cover all of them?
That doesn't mean that we can't add policies that don't visions and made my recommendations, obviously. They're at the bottom of of that page. It says policies recently revised. I shouldn't have said recently. There have been no changes and I don't think that they're a high priority to update. So the ones that I think are a priority. Yes, we can certainly go through everything that you like.
Start with the animals in the library. Does that or do we want to save that one for agenda item number eight? And item number eight, we'll come back to that one. And my only question on that one, Amy. The costs for replacement of items if same or does that need to be updated?
It needs to be updated. The collection development policy the first one that I wrote a revision for when I started this job.
Need to include things like 3D printer covered in the scope of the policy already.
It is. Well, we don't have a 3D printer, but it's all items, not just books and magazines and so on, but
Oh, I get those 3D pens and stuff.
Oh, the 3D pens. Yeah, that's covered under programming. It's not really part of the circulating collection. It's more of a program supply, so that's not covered in collection development.
Okay.
And all this is several policies. But if there are needed changes that you already have, Amy, or rather than needs to be changed, could you bring back your recommendations for changes in the except maybe the first one?
Yes, absolutely. I can do that. And last month and my notes, I think we had just talked about which policies we would want to revise at this meeting and then at future meetings and bring back those revisions. So make recommendations, but I want the board to give me some direction on exactly which policies they would like revised as well. Currently, yeah.
And and we can do policies at any time as long as we agendize it on a meeting agenda, correct, Carrie?
That's correct. Oh, sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry, that was for Carrie. Sorry.
Through the policy
Change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, I'm thinking I agree with Bonnie that as part of all this, that you should bring your recommendations forward. But of course, we can, Kate, we can consider other policies, talk about them for that any board, any trustee would like to see change.
Well, that's why I thought we'd just go through. If nobody has any input on any one policy, we just skip over it. But if anybody has something they wanted Amy to work on, I wanted us to give her that today. Okay, so the next one was collection development. My only question on that one, Amy, and I don't even think it's about the policy. Do you often get requests for reconsideration of materials?
No, not often. I think there's been maybe five in the last six years. It's infrequent, but it it is part of that policy. It's an important thing to have. No, it's not that common.
Right. I just was curious on that one.
I will. This is Bonnie. It's probably been maybe just before Amy's tenure. We did have some questions on the collection development policy. They were resolved because we had the policy about disputed materials. So occasionally, Amy's right. Occasionally, you'll get one, but it's always good to have that policy to refer people to.
Yeah, I was just curious how often that happened. Okay, and then the next one is the community meeting room.
That was just updated last year, by the way.
And if nobody has anything on that one, we'll go on to the computer and internet use. And the only thing I noticed on that one was that on page three, it says that they can use a floppy disk. Are the computers even capable of that?
No, it's horrendously out of date.
Anyone else have anything on that one? And then the confidentiality of library records. And the only thing I saw on that one was on page two. It says in the absence of the library director, the public services coordinator, which is that a position that even exists anymore?
It does, but it doesn't follow our chain of command policy.
Okay, because I didn't
Yeah.
see it in the org chart. Okay.
The I'm trying to think of the exact title, but that's Karen Fitzgerald's title. But it is something like library program coordinator or something like that. But but that's an incorrect chain of command, so we would have to fix that.
Yeah, I just thought it needs to match whatever
Right.
we have on the org chart. Okay, and then cooperation with other libraries and agencies?
Not much of that'll change. We're mandated by the state library to have that policy. But since it's been seven years, I think it does deserve another look.
Okay, and then detention facilities, materials collection?
That one's really, really out of date. That applies to like China Spring. It's something that changes so frequently that I think that the policy we have is far too specific. Because I know at China Spring, they're constantly updating their list of what's appropriate and inappropriate reading materials. You know, from year to year, they will change that. So I think that what we have is too specific and therefore we would have to update it every year. I think we can come up with a more general policy that would cover those facilities.
Yeah, because I just noticed in the China Springs forum, I guess it is, they have some cross outs on their forum, which I thought was odd to have in a policy. And then the new service librarian, that that person's name is wrong in there, too.
Right.
Do we still have a a policy with the Lake Tahoe juvenile detention center? Do we still work with him?
We do have books there that we refresh from time to time, but it's pretty We do have um, books there that we refresh from time to time, but it's pretty uncommon. Um, they just have a collection that we've given them. So it is covered in this policy, but uh, we can certainly change it to update our current practices.
Yeah.
Okay, and the next one is D C C A T V equipment?
Sorry, yeah, I shouldn't put that on the list. That that we can get rid of that because that equipment is long gone. We have turned it over to tech services for the county and then uh, I think last year or earlier this year, they got rid of all of the equipment from my approval. Um, because it's it was horribly outdated and unusable. Um, that was really just something they were storing, I think. Um, but we can get rid of that policy altogether.
Well, it is because it no longer exists.
Uh, the next one is electronic email. And my only thing was possibly add in there that they're providing the emails for the trustees to have that in the policy.
Yeah, definitely.
And then um, under passwords, it says the email passwords are assigned. And I know that's how it was when Larry set it up, but then we worked with it and he was able to let us choose our own password. So maybe just change the wording on that, that he manages it all.
Right.
And the next one was exhibits and displays? Nothing
That one's out of date and and we do handle the display case a little differently now than we did seven years ago. Um, so that just needs some refreshing. But it it concerns um, displays and the display cases of both libraries as well as any other special exhibit. So you know, like if we featured, you know, a collection of photography from the photography club or something like that. So we just need to update that one.
Okay, and the next one is gifts?
At the time that one was written, we had more than one account for gifts and now we don't. So that does definitely needs to be updated.
And then the hazardous conditions?
That was just updated last year. I don't know many updates that it needs.
I think maybe that our copy needs to be mine says two thousand eight. So I know
We did. Okay. We can send you the updated one, no problem.
Yeah, that's what mine says, too.
Oh, sorry about that.
Incident reporting form, that's not really a policy, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay, um, interlibrary loan?
Nothing's really changed with that policy, even though it's a little old. Um, interlibrary loan processes have not changed. And again, that's something that we have to have um, required by the state library. But there really hasn't been any changes to that. So I don't think it's a priority right now.
Okay. Uh, library user suggestions and grievances?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
The only thing I thought on that one, because it says that they can take it up with the board, is include that uh, generic board email in the policy.
Yes.
And then the next one was the patron conduct.
That one also needs to be updated.
Reading history?
The policy that we have in place is still current. I don't think that one needs to be updated.
Um, registration of patrons?
No changes to that either that I'm aware of.
Um, unattended children?
It's an old policy, but it's still the policy we operate by, and I think that the one we have in place is fine.
Okay, and then work week and holidays?
That one we update every year. So I didn't put it on the list because every November we vote on holidays.
Okay, and and my only question was, I know it says that um, Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, the library closes at five. Late in that afternoon, do you get a lot of traffic through the library? And are the staff good with it closing that late?
Well, we can certainly close earlier, but no, by late afternoon, there's nobody there.
Okay, because that's that was the only one to me that stuck out that why make them sit there on the eve of a holiday if there's nothing going on at the library?
Yes, I can. I can certainly change that when I present um, that next month.
Okay. And that was all of the ones in the binder. Does anyone have anything else? Okay, so Amy, next month you'll bring us back the proposed changes or?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want them all at once, or would you like to spread them over a couple of meetings?
Bonnie, do you have an opinion on that? Mark? Jill?
Well, I think it's going to take some time. I would so maybe over the next couple of meetings.
Whatever's most efficient.
No.
Do you want her to bring what all the ones that she has and then we can agendize a couple of them? Or I mean, how do you want to do it?
Well, maybe when she has it, when they go point with the agenda, have her put on the agenda, the one she has for recommendation for change.
Okay.
So right now that would be eleven policies on the top half of that page plus the holiday one that we always do in November. So that's twelve. Um, you could give me direction just to do half of them now and half in December, if you like, without specifying particular ones. But if there are some that you'd like to see first, that's fine, too. Whatever you prefer.
I think
Whoopsie, sorry.
This is Mark Jensen, and uh, I I encourage Amy to prioritize uh, the policies. If there's some that she thinks uh, are more pressing than others, uh, to bring those forward first. But in the end, uh, I think whatever is decided is fine.
I do, too. I agree.
So you'll bring back the ones you think are the most important in November and then the others in December. Does that sound like a good plan?
That sounds good to me. It'll probably be approximately half and half. Yeah, that's great. Oh, but we do need to, um, excuse me, before we close out this item, um, we mentioned the policy on the CCTV equipment that's outdated and defunct. Um, I think we need a motion um, and an action to erase that policy altogether. Is that correct, Carrie?
If you wanted to do that, I I my thought is you could do that next time. I'm actually not sure if you need to do that by resolution or if you just can do it by motion to get rid of it altogether. Um, so if we could address that next time, I I would appreciate it anyway, so I can double check on that to make sure we do it right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number six for possible action. Discussion and possible action on revisions to the library's mission statement, which states, "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to provide a wide range of library materials, services, and programs to meet the informational, recreational, and cultural needs of the citizens of Douglas County."
Well, this is Bonnie. I brought I have to have this on the agenda because I was asked by um, a community member if the library had a mission statement. And so when I went through the manual, when I went through the handbook, the only place I found the mission statement was I have to, it's under the collection development or the right to read statement. And I thought it should be earlier in the handbook. It should be probably in one of the first things we have in the handbook. So that was my recommendation. We just move for back, you know, put it in the front so people can find a mission statement quickly. And so that was my suggestion for that.
And it is on the website, just to put it out there.
I I think, and that's good. I I mean, I didn't know that. I just started looking for one and um, so I thought it was important. At least the mission statement should be should be one of the first things people see if they look at the handbook and then I have that's one possible change and uh, I just I think this might be easier where it says a wide range of library materials uh, I I don't know about wide range. Uh, could it be a comprehensive collection or uh, or just a collection of library material services and programs that meet the informational needs? I think I just questioned the use of wide range. It's not but you don't have to change it. I just kind of didn't care for that phrase.
And then I thought we could add in there educational needs also.
Oh, that's that's good.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. And and also um, to that we provide material services, programs, and train staff.
Oh, yeah, that's good, too. What about qualified staff instead of training?
Well, I like that. Okay, um, to clarify, you wanted that right after the word provide? Before we say material services and programs, or did you want that after programs?
Are you talking to me or Bonnie?
I'm sorry, Kate, either one.
Okay, and and you're asking about uh, trained staff or qualified staff?
Yeah, where did you want that to go?
Um, I mean, wherever it fits best, you know, it's so that it flows. But I just, we do have very well-trained staff, and I think that needs to be in there that the public knows that, you know.
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
And the and then educational, wherever that fits in the flow of it also, because we want to get kids in there from the school, so.
Okay.
This is Mark Jensen. Um, I think that the uh, two words, the citizens, should be changed to all residents so that it reads needs of all residents of Douglas County.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I agree. I agree. I could make all these changes and bring it back to the November meeting?
Sounds good.
Good. Any other revisions you would like? Anyone would like?
And then the only other thing, Amy, is can you speak to Larry about putting that so that it comes up when the library page first comes up so that it's very easable, easy for people to find when they're looking?
We certainly can. We can add it to the front of the homepage. Absolutely.
And can you put it in the have a mission statement as one of the policies in the handbook?
Put it up. Yes, we could put that at the beginning. I think that's a good idea. Because it's the mission statement that guides all of the policies, so it really makes more sense that way.
And then did did we decide on what is going to go in place of the wide range?
Oh, yeah. I like Bonnie's suggestion. Comprehensive.
Collection?
Collection. What about variety? Or is that too vague? Comprehensive, right?
I think variety is that cover. If it's it is varied, it's a variety if it is a comprehensive collection. Because we have all the services, the programs, and all the things.
Okay.
So did you get all that, Amy?
I think so. Um, so we're going to say comprehensive instead of wide range. Um, we're going to squeeze in the word educational and also qualified staff. We're going to change citizens to all residents. And we're going to discuss it again next month.
Yep. Good.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so if we're no more discussion on that one, we'll move on to agenda item number seven for possible action, discussion of the library's long-range plan and planning for twenty twenty-one.
First page uh, for this agenda item is the summary of the long-range plan again. And last month, we we discussed what to do about a new long-range plan, um, whether or not we should continue the one we have and for how long? Um, or if we want to come up with something else, um, the process of doing a new long-range plan would be at least six months. So there's no way that we'll have a new one for twenty twenty-one between now and then. Um, so that's something that we definitely need to decide on.
So you we need to decide to go with what we have already and then in sometime next year, work on the six-month process of updating it?
That's that's one choice. Um, we could continue the current plan, leave it exactly as it is for one year or two years, however long we like, um, and submit that to the state library. We do need to decide by next month so that it can be submitted on time. Um, and so the board can today or next month decide if you want to just take the plan that we have and continue it for whatever period of time you prefer. And then next year or whenever you determine, we could start on a new long-range plan.
And and what would be your preference or recommendation, Amy?
My recommendation um, would be to extend the plan that we have now for two years. Um, but then start on the new one next year and and hopefully finish before those two years are up. It gives us a little bit of a buffer um, in case it takes longer than six months or or what have you.
I like I like that proposal, Amy. Um, I tried to find my long-range plan notebook. They um, and I said, because I had a call about this because they said it had two plans in there, but didn't have our plan. And I tried to explain to the person that the plan was long and these were our two major goals. But I don't think we have time to uh, in the next month, to do a strategic plan for five years or ten years. And if you notice in the plans that were presented, they went through what are the weakness and the strength and the opportunities and and all the things that were included in the long-range plan and our current long-range plan as well. And uh, and to come up with that, Amy's right, takes time. It takes a considerable amount of time, and we did that with the the plan that it's currently in existence. So I would take uh, Amy's recommendation that we approve this one maybe for two years and then start working almost immediately on developing um, a strategic plan for the the state library says five years, but you can do five years and then maybe at least start taking us towards the future, which is the purpose of the strategic plan.
That sounds good to me. One, I have a question, um, which is there are a lot of goals. I think that the current plan is very, you know, was done very robustly and very carefully and is a very good plan um, to have on the shelf and to work forward from. There are a lot of goals and objectives and um, measuring sticks that were set forth to be accomplished, you know, in this ten-year time span. And I think it would be useful to do some kind of review of what actually transpired and was able to be accomplished versus the stated goals in the original plan over that ten-year period and kind of a timeline of when those were accomplished or not accomplished. And there could be very good reasons why, you know, things weren't accomplished. There could be, there could be many, you know, but I think there's a lot to learn from, you know, this this original long-term plan had some very ambitious um, you know, was looking, really looking forward to the future and had some very ambitious
You know, was looking really looking forward to the future and had some very ambitious. You know. Ideas to be explored, including, you know. Robotics, for example, you know, and and other, you know. Emerging technologies and I'm not sure. Those, um, you know, where the probing into those ever went. If. You know, so I think it would be good. To do a recap on on goals versus results and that might provide a foundation for. Um, setting. More realistic or realistic goals and objectives in the coming plan.
Well, along those lines, I was thinking too that when we do look at it. Um, the COVID response that Amy can let us know where we were lacking, how prepared we were for something like that. So that we can include moving forward to have things in place should another emergency situation arise like that.
Sure, you know, there are all things we've learned since that started. And things that we hope to learn and dreamed of, but maybe didn't. Come to being in quite the same timeframe expected. And I think there's some other things that may have been simpler that got maybe got lost in the. You know, but you know, lost somewhere along the way, or maybe they and other things came forth that we weren't expecting to do. So it would just be nice to kind of tie that up in a bow. And say, this was our plan. This is what we wanted to do. This is what we did. This is what we learned. And then that's a springboard for doing another. Uh, more robust planning in a timeline that makes sense. So that's that's what I was thinking.
Very good.
So do we want to make a motion today to extend the plan that we have? For either a year or two and then work on actively next year, getting a five-year plan in place?
I would make that motion.
And I would second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to extend our current plan for two years. Is that what we want to do or?
I think two gives us some leeway.
Okay, so there's a motion to extend the current plan for two years and do we want to start in January and working on?
Oh, I would like to start in January, working on it if we include as part of that work. A comprehensive review, you know, as a, you know, as I said, is kind of a building, a basic building block and jumping off. Because I I wouldn't feel comfortable starting on something new unless we kind of know where we've been and how we've done. So. Yeah, so if that's.
Sorry.
Did as part of the process, I'm really not, I'm not, you have to forgive me, I'm not an expert on parliamentary process or how to frame things as. Motions and what comes under an existing motion. So you'll have to help me with that, but. I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to get started in January, but to take baby steps and start with a review and. And and you'd and then go from there, you know, plotting it out step by step.
Well, you know, having certain experience in just that's actually what a strategic plan does. It starts. With what you where you are and what you've done and and where you want to go with that. And it takes some time. We don't have time to do community. Interviews and it takes time to set out what are your weaknesses and what are your strengths and? And I want to, I don't know how to say this, but I think what we've just gone through is we need to start, we need to get community input into our next strategic plan. We did it for this plan. The current plan, we did have a community interviews and work sessions and so. And we did set out what were the strength and people helped us set out what were the strengths and weaknesses. So. It it takes time. It takes a lot of time to do it correctly. And you'll notice like Carson said, they use somebody from Reno, UNR. We don't necessarily need to do that, but. There's just, it's a. It is a major process. I'll put it that way.
This is Amy and I wanted to segue from what Bonnie just said. We might need help, but we certainly can't afford a consultant as we did last time maybe. Um, however, we could get consultants from the state library and or UNR like Carson did. Um, and that's definitely going to be part of the process. We will, if we do decide to do that, we will have to coordinate schedules because I know. The state library consults with more than one library at a time sometimes. Um, but I think the approach that Heather was talking about and doing it in small increments. Um, would work really well, regardless of who we decide to get help from, if any at all. Um, I just wanted to put out a reminder that if we do. Uh, but some consulting and some help with this, which I would strongly recommend. Um, the state library and UNR are both good sources and we could work with them.
Okay, so Bonnie, your motion?
It was to approve the current long-range plan for the next two years. And. I guess that's it, really. That we. Same hot. Hot ginger cake.
No, I'm saying that that that's all you want in that motion is just approve the. Plan for two years. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay, Bonnie, a motion and a second. All those in favor for extending it for two years?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I I don't know how to vote on this one because I feel. Um, as though there should be a but in there. Extended for two years, but began. You know, planning. In 2021. So I don't know if those have to be two motions or if by putting this motion, we need. To qualify it or do we just need a second motion that says planning will begin?
Yes, that that can be.
Okay, go ahead.
No, sorry, Heather. Um, yes, we can do a second motion. Um, the way the agenda item is written. Is that we would plan for 2021 and so you can certainly make a second motion that we would begin work. On a certain date or in a certain month or whatever. However, you want to phrase it.
And and we can do it like we did with the Nevada State Online Trustee Training that we have on every agenda. So that we address some portion of it every month that we meet.
Yes.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Then the motion just needs to say all that, yeah.
That's good. Okay, so Heather, you're making the motion that we agendize this for 2021. Starting with the January meeting, it will be on every agenda that we discuss the long-range plan.
Uh, yes, I am making that motion. Yes.
Anyone want a second?
I'll second. Jill Harper, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to work on the long-range plan starting in January 2021 and it will be included on every agenda so that we work on it each month. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carried. Well, moving on to agenda item number eight for possible action. Discussing and possible reconsideration of the previous board action to permit pilot program. In which the library worked in partnership with animal services and allowed adoptable animals to be in the library on a temporary basis.
Okay, I've included in your packet an excerpt from when the. Item was brought before the board in November of last year.
I asked to have this on the agenda. For. I, the last few months, I have had. Contact from several people in the community that. Did not like the policy because of allergies of children or adults coming into the library. And then COVID hit and that made it even more serious to a lot of people. And so there were articles. In the paper, there were letters to the county manager. And in discussion and they keep saying to me, you said you'd put it on the agenda. And I said, well, we're we're going to wait to get through COVID. And then they said, well, it's not on the agenda. So I said, okay, I'll put it on the agenda. And their concern is that a child or anyone should not coming into the library should not be concerned. About encountering. Uh, well, they said a cat, but I guess it's any animal that they're allergic to. Without. You know, being aware because then they won't come if they go into it and it. I know cat allergies. If you're allergic, if there's been one in the house, you can't go in hardly. So. I just brought it back up because I think we do have an animal policy in our handbook. And we didn't look at that last year when we did this, so. I think that I think we should just rescind that we're going to keep animals in the library for adoption. I don't want any more adverse comments in the community that we need about the library.
Amy, what's this? This is Mark Jensen. What's the status of that program?
Thank you, Mark. Um. In March, we did have a cat that was adopted right before we closed. So that when we did close for the pandemic, we didn't have any more. Um, animals up for adoption and since that time, we have not had any additional, obviously because we haven't been open for full service in a while. So right now, um, and for the last seven months, we haven't had any.
And I know I researched when I saw letters to the editor and stuff about having cats in the library. Um, and it said that the libraries that do do that, they. Appease the public's concerns by having more extensive janitorial services done for the library. Which knowing that ours have gone up this year through no fault of our own, I don't see where we can think of. Putting more janitorial costs on the library to allow the cats to be in there. I I myself personally didn't realize cat allergies are so prevalent. Or that they affect people very differently than like dog allergies and stuff. So I I would have to agree with Bonnie that since we do have a policy that says. That we won't have animals unless they're service animals. And that after Baker and Taylor that the program would go away to have them. I think that. We have to give the patrons what they want.
Is there some other? An alternative that we could still help get kitty cats homes? For example, my sister just adopted two cats down in Southern California. And all of the, she couldn't go into the facility to look at the kittens. They had to zoom pictures of the kitties. And then, um, and then when it came time to her for her to pick them up. We went down, we texted them. There was a way that that we could get the cat. So is there some way that the library can still facilitate finding homes for these cats? And yet not be around people that have allergies?
Well, and I I thought of that and thought that they could use their Facebook or Instagram and I have no idea if Animal Services has the capability. To provide videos for them or at least. Put pictures up that this is what's available this week through Animal Services. You know, that the library can help them in that way. And I know it's not the same as, oh, look at the cute kitty, but.
Or can we put it on the website? I don't, you know, I don't know what that capability is.
Oh, yes, we could include it on website and social media. We would have to talk to. Animal Services before I can give you 100% on that because I don't want to make assumptions for them. Um, and then they'll, to answer your question, Jill, another. Um, option would be to have an outdoor like adoption event, like a one day or or two day special event rather than a regular thing. Um, during the weather, we can have it outdoors. Um, we could certainly consider that as an alternative.
Absolutely, that'd be great. So maybe you could talk to them and then get back to us next time.
Okay.
Okay, see what our choices are.
I was just reading this and this said it would be a pilot program for six months. Well, the six months is up.
Well, yeah, thanks to COVID. Yeah, it only ran for two months before we closed.
But but the six months is up, so we just no longer would run the program then.
But we could do it maybe in an alternative fashion.
Yeah.
So Amy, can you check with Animal Services and see what they can work with you and like you said, an outdoor event if that's possible? And then the social media and website, you know, assisting them by just posting what they have available?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I can definitely do that. I'm not sure if we need an action on this one. Um, as Bonnie pointed out, the six months are up. I'm not sure if we need to take action and say that. Since the. Pilot program was supposed to be for six months and six months have passed that we won't continue it? Or if it's some other type of motion?
How about a motion that that you find out alternative ways that we can help place cats? And then we talk about it on our at our next meeting? Does that make sense?
Yes.
But do we have to give some action on the? Previous action that the board took since it's on this agenda? Carrie?
That would be my recommendation based on the way it's phrased on the agenda.
Well, I I'll make a motion since the pilot program for the. Partnership with Community Services for Adoption Cats. Has expired that it will not be continued as is. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
So so it's a motion to. Discontinue the program?
Yes. But I want to make sure that we can still have it on the agenda to talk about next time. How do we do?
Right, and I don't, I don't think we need a motion for that, Jill. You can just request it, which we've all heard you request it to be on there for next month.
Okay.
It's in my notes. I will definitely get more information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we. We have a motion, okay, a motion and a second to discontinue the program of animals in the library. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I can tell these people it's done.
Okay, that motion carried and we'll move on to agenda item number nine. For possible action, discussion of budget priorities in preparation for the fiscal year 2021 and 2022 decisions.
I have not yet heard about any deadlines, but. Considering past months or excuse me, past fiscal years. We've started in November, December. So. It would be good to talk about priorities now since. We don't always get a lot of time with these deadlines. Um, sometimes they don't. Give the library time because we have armies monthly. Uh, to meet all the deadlines. So most of you will remember in the past, sometimes. We have to work with finance because we have to vote on things before we can submit them. Um, that's just a reminder. Um, but as far as priorities go, that would be really helpful as we, you know, get closer and closer to starting the budget work.
This is Bonnie again. I asked to have this on the agenda because we talked about it, Mark, when did we talk about starting earlier in October? So that when they request supplementary. Budget items and the ones that you want to put in firsthand, we're requesting new dollars, which we should request everything now this year. That the board's not caught by surprise that. Items have been submitted that were not approved by the board or were not the board's priorities and. I I want it for discussion only because I I don't know if anybody can come up with priorities now. I have one, which of course is the collection. But but. I think we need to start at least thinking about what. Dollars and Amy, if you could. Help going through the budget this year, what has had the the reductions have had the greatest impact other than the collections development because to me that would be number one. That we need to request either be re. That we need to request either be refunded or if they're new items, then why, and we need to have it in, in the funding request for that? So that we're in front of this. If they, if they do it in November, and part of the submission dates last year were November and then December, and then we were caught in that. And I just think we need to really take some time to think about it.
Okay, I'd like to point out that in the past, we have had to submit things on a placeholder basis. I've never submitted anything without board approval, but sometimes deadlines don't match up with our meetings. And so I'll be asked by the county finance department to submit something. And so I tell them some preliminary information and, and always add the caveat that the library board has to vote on those items before they can be considered a real request. And so it's, it's difficult sometimes to juggle the deadlines with our board meetings. But the finance department has always been very understanding and flexible when it comes to items that the library board needs to vote on. They do understand that we have to go through a process differently than some other departments.
I agree with you, Amy.
By the way, I did have this as a discussion item, but it was later changed to an action item. Sorry.
Well, my priority would be the bookmobile, but until they loosen things up, it can't even be back out on the road. And, and Amy, I mean, there, there's no way to operate the bookmobile in the foreseeable future?
It depends on what you mean by foreseeable. With all of the Covid restrictions in place, no, we're not able to operate right now.
And that's because it requires two people?
Yes. And we could foreseeably change that if any of the restrictions or mandates have changed. But also keep in mind that there's no money in the budget for a bookmobile right now. We would have to reallocate funds just to buy gas and get it on the road. But that's because our budget was so severely slashed this year. We have zero money for programs, zero money for bookmobile or homebound.
Well, I noticed in your budget report, Amy, that the program, I don't know what that was. The program was already in deficit, so.
Yep. We, yeah, we had, we started with zero, but we had to have things and that happens. We can always move it around before the end of the fiscal year so that it balances.
Well, I just, if you could bring back in maybe November, I mean, these would be the collection. But is there, are there any new funds you're, you would think about?
I don't right now until I take a closer look at it, but I would love to hear what the board would like to add, if anything. Normally what people or what departments tend to add are additional positions, which I don't think we need right now. Or anything for the facilities or any capital projects, which we may have. But again, I'd really like to hear from the board on that. I don't know of anything off the top of my head, but I need to study it more closely.
And is there any word on when those positions might be unfrozen that you've been waiting to fill?
No, however, I am going to IRC on Wednesday and I plan to ask about that at the time. We are finally past the first quarter and so we should have new revenues coming in. I don't have that information yet, but I expect it very soon. And if our revenues are above what we predicted, then that might help open up those frozen positions and, and may even add funds to services and supplies. But I don't have that information right now, so I can't make any promises, but I expect it soon.
Okay, thanks.
Amy, when you say new funds, is that new funds into the county?
No, I'm sorry. I, I was talking about anything new that we would want to add to our budget as a request.
I know, but she said if there's, if the funds are greater now in the fourth quarter than, or when they did the budget.
Yes.
We would be, we would have to go through the county to get any augmentations to our current budget, correct?
Correct. There is a mandate in place that we get a certain percentage of sales tax. So if sales tax is above and beyond what they initially predicted for the fiscal year, then we would get that money. We wouldn't have to quote unquote write for it or request it. It's naturally goes to us. So we would just, yeah, we would just augment our budget with it. That's just a paperwork issue, but we would automatically get those funds.
Well, the only thing I would think about if for capital projects, if there would be a way to put, and I don't know where it would be, put into an expansion of the building.
Yeah, I agree completely.
Then you'd have to get estimated cost for that, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we would. But if, if it does seem like something we want to request, I can get started on it and, and just do some research. So I can definitely do that before the budget process starts.
I think we are, you don't even like for a meeting room now, so.
Right, exactly, yeah, we're very short on space.
Do you have any recommendations?
Also be, oh, sorry, sorry, Jill. It could also be part of the strategic plan. It, I think in a couple of the strategic plan samples that we read, a couple of libraries added into their strategic plan that they would expand their facilities.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jill, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, is there anything specific that if we got extra revenue that you think we should be looking into using it for?
For this year or for the next year?
For next year.
For next year, I, I would definitely add funds to what the board members have already identified. Collection and the bookmobile and any other outreach services and then capital. I think our biggest problem we face, besides Covid, of course, is our lack of space and the fact that we've grown out of our building in the last 30 years.
Is there a, another way to get money? I mean, like, like school bonds? Where, you know, that we pass something in the community and, and that sort of thing?
Yes, and I can talk to the CFO about that. She has said that we could acquire debt. A lot of libraries do that and so we could seek out funds that way. We can certainly seek out donations. So yes, an expansion could be funded by more than one source or from sources other than our capital budget. So yeah, there would be a lot of options for the type of funding we could use. For instance, the community center that opened a few years ago was funded primarily by donations. And so it's certainly possible that we could go beyond our own revenue and find another source.
Okay. Well, then I think it would be really beneficial for you to start looking at numbers and, you know, and possibilities. Because people aren't going to go, oh, I'll give money and, and they don't know what they're looking at.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It can take a lot of time, so I would request, allow me to report on that in December rather than November, just so that I have time to gather all that information.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you need an action on this item, but if you did, it would be just to tell me what you want to see at a future meeting. Or you can decide to take no action and we can just discuss it again.
I just think that we should at a future meeting, maybe in December, that we will look at possibilities for expanding the library and getting estimates and so that we can move forward to get donations, any kind of extra money. I'm not making it real clear, but that's basically what I'm doing.
I got it.
Oh, good.
So, so is that a motion or we're just saying that we're going to do it in December?
I think we make a motion.
So go ahead, Jill.
Oh, sure, thanks. I made a motion that Amy does research to look into expanding the library. Does that sound good enough?
Do we have a second?
And I'm sorry, this is Carrie Rosser with the DA's office. I just want to clarify, since the agenda item is for budget priorities, I think Jill's intent is consistent with that, but just in terms of phrasing it, that essentially the motion is to identify expansion of the library as a budget priority and to look into funding options or, or something to that effect.
Sounds perfect. Can we use that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right.
So Jill's made the motion.
Uh huh. To.
This is Mark Jensen and I second.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to look into expansion of the library as a budget priority. And Amy will research that and bring it to the December meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on to agenda.
I would request that we think of budget pri-, budget items we'd like to have other than that, just for, for November. This is just possible things we might want to see the library have. Because this is, I'm talking about new funding totally, so.
Okay, I'm confused, Bonnie.
I don't want in, I don't want a motion. I think the board just would think about things they might like to see in the library. If we, if we're, if the county asks us for supplementary budget requests, that we might have some things we could put in. Okay.
Everyone's clear with that? Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number 10 for discussion only. Update on the vacant positions and recruitment of library staff. Amy?
Yes, thank you. We are at the end of the recruitment phase for the senior library technician position. We have finished interviews and we have recommended someone to be made an offer to. There's a new procedure in place that I have to go to IRC to get permission to do that. And so I cannot reveal any names at this time. However, I am scheduled to be at IRC on Wednesday to get that offer approved. And if it is, then I'll make the offer right away. And hopefully the person that we selected will be able to start within a month of that. You know, giving time for background checks and so on. So that one is just about finished up. And then as we said a moment ago, the other positions are still frozen and I hope to have more information soon. That's it.
Any? Okay. And moving on to agenda item number 11 for discussion only. The library director's monthly report on library operations and statistical reports from staff.
Okay. My monthly report is comprehensive of everything that has been going on. We've been focusing our efforts on curbside service and the limited browsing hours that we have. I've mentioned in my report a couple of things, just that we update our sanitation procedures as new studies come out. The only other thing I've noticed, donations, we get so many donations, just huge amounts every single day. So we've made a lot of runs to thrift books to sell those items on behalf of the friends of the library. And we'll continue to do that until we're able to have a bookstore. We simply just don't have storage space, so they just need, they just go directly to the reseller. And that's been a, a big portion of our work some days is just dealing with donations. So that continues to be a significant thing in our operations. The telephone system is now completely operational. It, it's a really fancy, modern system. Our old phones from the 1980s have now all gone away. And the IT department owns those, those were county owned property. So I don't know exactly what they're going to do with them. But those are long gone, thank goodness. And then this new system and, and new contract in place will save us about $2,000 a year. And that's because we're not going to be on the county side of the phone system. We get the phone numbers, we have those phone numbers, they're ours now rather than the county's. And so if we need repairs, we go to our IT person or our carrier, whomever. But we're not dependent on the county anymore. However, we're still connected and we can dial them directly. So it worked out really, really well. And we also have a direct connection with the Lake Library now. So it's, it's all a win-win. We've saved money, we've made it more efficient, we've made it more modern so that people can have things like what they smell. And it's just worked out beautifully and I'm so glad that this project is done. And then we got a couple of significant donations from the Friends of the Library. And I went to the last Friends meeting and, and talked about things that are going on at the library. In the previous month, they voted to give us a $6,000 grant for buying books and other materials. And that's because our budget was slashed so severely that they really wanted to help us out, which we really, really need. And then also an individual donated 1,500 to the Friends, which they handed over to us specifically for materials and services for seniors, which will really help our large print collection. And we're really excited about that. So I know that the Friends will always support us and they're a wonderful organization. But I like to call out the significant things that they do here at the meeting whenever I can. So a big thank you to them again, we're really excited about that. And that's it. And then statistics, I'll hand over to Julia.
Right, the statistical report was included again in the agenda. So we have the, the current year, the 2021 year to date, as well as August and September numbers. And then I also included the 2019, 2020 for comparative numbers. If everything is really consistent over last month, from August to September, there are a few variations, but everything overall has been really consistent. One thing that I would like to point out, compared to last year, our database sessions have gone up substantially. Some of the, the big increases have been with our Learning Express library database, which is tutorials, practice exams, and skills building courses and whatnot. And the other substantial increase was in Heritage Quest, Heritage Quest, which is our genealogy database. So you'll see that the numbers are, are up quite a bit from, from last year at this time. Other than that, everything's very, very consistent. So if there's any questions?
I would like to point out, Julia, I'm really excited and impressed that our circulation numbers compared to last year, we're very close to those totals. And that's with very limited hours and browsing. So for instance, last year in Minden, it was 12,000 items and this year it's 10,000 items. I expected it to be much lower, so I'm absolutely delighted that those numbers are so high. And also I'd like to point out that our ebook checkouts and electronic material downloadable checkouts are very high. And, and actually I think higher than last year in one spot. So of course, those have been much more popular since we've been closed and, and that's wonderful. We want to see that. So I just wanted to highlight those two things. I think we're doing an outstanding job considering all of the challenges that we have to overcome.
And Julia, the databases you talked about, people can access those from home, correct?
Yes, they can, with their library card number, they can access those at home.
Oh, and to answer part of that question too, the Law Library has Westlaw, which is the legal database. And it's now available through our website for free, simply because we're not fully open access in the building right now. So the vendor, pardon me, the vendor extended that. And we've had several months of free access through our website. So all of our patrons can access that as well with or without a library card.
I think this report's great and I congratulate you on the, the, as you say, the items that have been checked out and the consistency year to year. I am just wondering if it is possible to get the next level down of detail on a couple of these items to, especially as we're going to be.
on a couple of these items to, especially as we're going to be going into this two-year window to prepare for long-range planning. For example, on the items checked out, I'm wondering if there's a way to get some broad categorizations. And you would probably be able to frame those better than I. But I mean, the one thing that comes to mind is fiction, nonfiction, you know, reference, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I know there are many ways to slice and dice, but it would kind of help give a picture of, you know, what our usage is and what our priorities would be, you know, in the future in terms of, you know, our dollars, our programs, et cetera. In the same way, I don't know to what extent this is available due to privacy concerns and so forth, but I think it would be useful to have some high-level demographics on patrons, like if they were seniors, adults, or children. Again, with the night of programs and just trends over time. And I personally, not that it would have to be on a summary page like this, like these could be supplemental pages to this report and keep this as, you know, as a summary report, which I think is excellent, but for those of us who like lots of data, you know, I would love to see some of the top, the major categories that you were mentioning just broken out. So again, we can learn from how many people are using tutorials, how many people are using the ancestry information. And it's just all interesting and it would kind of be, you know, I think it would be helpful as we go into this window of planning. So just putting it out there as is it possible and it would be nice. And I don't know quite what the next steps would be, I guess, to find out if it's feasible and if it would involve a lot of extra time and effort and with the constraints we have. But it's a wish list item for me.
Okay. Julia, you can go ahead and speak to what we can do.
Yeah, we can definitely run reports on the collection-based statistics. So you know, nonfiction versus fiction, our audiobooks and whatnot. It will be a time. It will take substantial time to do, but that is something that I can do. I think in the past, we have possibly come to each month had a different section that was focused on. So one month that it would be databases and then the next month it would be collection. So I could do it that way, but if you would like specific things, I can include those as supplemental as well.
We could also break them down by age group. We can have, you know, adult, teen, and children as well.
Yeah.
Would it be easier to just do it and present kind of a detailed report on a quarterly basis? Would that save you some time and effort and allow you more time to do it? Or is it kind of six, one half dozen of the other?
Yeah, quarterly would be feasible.
Yeah, we could start in January, I think. Is that realistic, Julia?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Then we'll move on to agenda item number 12, closing public comments. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the library board of trustees. Any written public comment received after 4:00 PM the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the library board of trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call 775-783-6024 and leave a voice message, which will be played for the library board of trustees and the public. Public comment is open at 11:33.
And so Carrie with the DA's office here, we sort of casually determined that that topic is something over which the board has jurisdiction and control. And so a discussion of it would need to be agendized, but the chair can make a decision one way or the other on how to do that in advance of that meeting. So I assume that Kate will consider whatever things come up between now and then and make a decision on how to do the meetings.
We would have to meet somewhere else besides the library, so part of that would be securing a location. But it's certainly possible.
And on a side note, Amy, the new app Libby for books, as opposed to, I forget what the other one was called?
RB Digital?
Yes, Libby is so much nicer.
Good.
It is much more user-friendly and it was a much quicker download than the other one was.
We've been hearing that from a lot of people. I'm so glad you're enjoying it. I like it better than the old one. It's a lot better.
Yeah.
I just realized I was on mute this whole time. This is Veronica Hallam. I have not received any public comment at this time by voicemail.
We got two more minutes. Okay, it's 11:38. Public comment has been open for the five minutes. Was there any public comment, Veronica?
There was no public comment.
Okay, so public comment is closed. And does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I motion to adjourn.
This concludes the library board's meeting at 11:38. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye-bye.